Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please be seated. I think we have enough seats for everyone. Remember to silence your phones if you have them. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the June twenty-seventh meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from board administration is approval of a notice of property sale resolution for parcel, also known as eight twenty-five Seventeenth Street for Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at four thirty-five P.M. Item five from the county auditor is approval of a liquor license application for the Woodbury County Fair in Mowville. Item six from human resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions; B, approval of a request to de-authorize county position; C, authorization to initiate the hiring process. And item seven from planning and zoning is approval to schedule August first at four forty-five P.M., August eighth at four forty-five P.M., and August fifteenth at four forty-five P.M. The three public hearings to consider amending the zoning ordinance to include solar energy systems, private and solar energy systems utility scale. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. We are ahead of our four forty-five P.M. set time, which is coming up, but in the meantime, we'll move on to item eight from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor Nelson. This is approval of resolution and energy policy and growth for Woodbury County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is, we believe, the impetus comes from our landowners in Woodbury County and those that we've heard of over the last several months that are really inspired by our constitution to make sure that private property rights are respected. And so I'll just read a little bit of the executive summary and give a little bit of the background and then invite Supervisor Nelson to make some comments. Woodbury County has a renewed interest in seeing our county grow for the benefit of families, residents, and future generations. And in short, we want to grow the right way as stewards of the land entrusted to us from our forbearers and leave our country an even better place to work, live, and raise a family for future generations. So during the past five years, the county's been confronted by several energy ideas that seem shortsighted, trading short-term gain for the long-term pain that could degrade the land, safety, private property rights, quality of life, and true economic growth. And so with that, we crafted this resolution to be supported as a way that would really set policy, but also signal to others that might want to come in where the county is at. And so with that, I'll kick it over to Supervisor Nelson.
Thanks. So therefore, Woodbury County supports economical and dependable forms of energy that have helped historically build America such as coal, natural gas, and urges technologies that improve environmental stewardship and are not dependent on weather which has proven to cause shortages when needed most. Recognizing the long-term sustainability of coal-fired electricity and the jobs necessary to support that at Port Neal. Cost-effective energy rather than those that purport to be cost-effective, but instead are heavily subsidized with reliance on federal and state government programs, which in reality are taxpayer dollars that pick winners and losers. Mindfulness for landowners and families who reside on the land over and above the interests of out-of-state companies and absentee landowners whose projects may negatively affect the quality of life and future economic prosperity. An absolute right for property land rights with the rejection of the use of eminent domain to force landowners to pace pipelines, turbines, solar panels, or any other energy commodity on their land against their will and consent. A commitment to land use that does not take productive ground out of agricultural production at a time when young farmers and true economic development needs a place to grow. Free market capitalism and market-driven technologies that from a taxation standpoint do not rely on abatements, incentives, credits, and other advantages over and above other industries. The safety of citizens and families and not subjecting residents to harm. Technologies that truly steward the environment, but not from supposed green energy that comes from China, is not biodegradable, is not founded on research or science, and does not meet a common sense threshold. And finally, energy industries that steward the land and do not degrade the soil in such ways as erosion, compaction, water quality, and wildlife ecosystems, and preserve our most valuable natural resource, the land, for future generations.
So what we'd like to do tonight is we'd like to have a reading of this resolution because we do not have a couple of supervisors here. We'd like to do this sort of as a first reading and then in a subsequent meeting have the full vote of the board. We think it's important that each supervisor is on record and believe that we will or hope to have the full support of the board. We also want to file copies of a cover letter from the board to the governor's office, to our area legislators, Mid-American Nexant Summit, Navigator, ISAC, and our Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning, the Farm Bureau, SimCo, local cities within Woodbury County, and the Suland Chamberlain Initiative. We think it's important that we speak as one voice and that when we do, that we signal to others the way that we want to see our land preserved and our county grow. So with that, those are, I think collectively, our opening comments.
Yeah. I spoke, Supervisor Bittenger is out of town, but he had enough cell service to send me a text today and was really wanting to be able to vote on this. And just as Supervisor Taylor said, you know, have all of our names on it, and so I think it's fair that we give that option to Keith and Supervisor Binger. And so with that, do you want to open up for some discussion?
Sure.
Well, same with, excuse me, same with Mr. Raddick also traveling. And I do appreciate the work done on this and anything we could incorporate, since we have an extra week, is certainly is welcome. Anything that impacts the long-term sustainability and economic development of our county is going to be very important, especially with regards to several different ideas, as it states. Several different ideas are coming to us. We only have on one parcel of land, you know, to work with, so. With that, we do have a few moments, about seven minutes before our set time. Would you gentlemen like to open it up to any public comment?
Absolutely.
Understanding we do have another week to look at this, is there anyone that would like to come up and give comments? If so, please state your name and address and you'll be timed for three minutes by our parliamentarian.
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight Two Hundred Street, Mowville. I really want to give you guys an attaboy. This is really what, this is very well-written. I can tell you that a lot of our state representatives and senators already have this. There was a pipeline meeting in Fort Dodge, and this was part of the discussion. People were talking about this, and I can tell you, as you know, I go to a lot of different county supervisor meetings, and even before they know where I'm from, I overhear conversations before the meeting or after the meeting where they're talking about Woodbury County and the types of things that they're doing on the wind turbines. And you're leading the pack, and that's where Woodbury County really should be. You know, we've had conversations about the economic benefits of our agriculture, especially when we talk about livestock. If you look around here, there's some young farmers here, and it's not easy to get farmers here at a four-thirty in the summer. Hay's down. It kind of looks like rain out there, but there's a lot of people here that are dedicated enough to say thank you. And in the direction that we want to go, this is an awesome first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Corey, seventeen fifty-seven Two Hundred Ninety Street, Salix. I was one of the ten or eleven people that put that meeting together last Saturday in Fort Dodge. For the record, there were three hundred and thirty people. There are not a hundred and fifty-six, as was reported in the media. We had members and legislators from North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa. We had county supervisors there. And your resolution, or copy of it, with permission from both you Supervisor Taylor and Nelson, was put in inserts that were handed out to everybody. So I can tell you that the wind is in our sail, behind and supporting what you two have drafted. It's beautifully written. I think it touches on all the topics that are essential in really claiming our land and the sovereignty that we all should have in protecting this land. So I want you to know that this coalition is not just Woodbury County. It's not just Iowa. All six states that are being impacted by these three pipeline companies are now have skin in the game. And we're moving forward as a coalition now. We're in full support of what you are proposing to do here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel here, twenty-eight eighty-nine Humboldt Avenue, Hornick, Iowa. This is kind of a rare moment here for me, I think, where government and common sense comes together. I mean, this is it right here. I want to commend all of you guys, whoever worked, well, you two, Supervisor Taylor and Supervisor Nelson, for putting this together. I think, like others have stated, it's very well-written. It's what this county needs at this time. And my grandpa farmed his land here in Woodbury County all of his life until he was physically unable to do so. My dad took over after that and farmed the same land. Now I'm farming that land, and someday, God willing, my little six-year-old boy who was at home will farm that land also. And this resolution that you guys have put before us will help pave the way to keep that family farm dream alive in this county, and I want to commend all of you for that and urge you to put the hammer down and let's get this resolution done. I think every county in the state of Iowa ought to pass this resolution. You guys are on the leading edge of this, and thanks a lot. So let's do it.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more, if there's someone that would like to before our four forty-five P.M. set time.
Kim Alexander Smith in Iowa. I too would like to commend you men for putting this thing together and encourage you to keep it going and let BlackRock, Vanguard, and these pipeline companies, and Terry Branstad know that Woodbury County is not for sale. Thank you.
Before we move ahead, is there any reason to come back to this after our set time or anything that has not been stated that needs to be stated from you gentlemen? Are we content to move on?
Yeah, I would just say in closing, we do appreciate you and we have heard your voices loud and clear. And the fact that you show up shapes our policy, shapes our decision-making, and we try to make sure that we're responsive to the needs and that we represent and have inherent in that name of representative or supervisor. You're supervisors. You're the ones that we represent, and so we want to carry forward that message. And then hopefully next week, early on in the agenda, we'll get this thing passed and it'll have a vote of all five of us as supervisors.
Yeah, and local government, three's a crowd, so appreciate you guys coming out.
And I'd just like to add, I think the timing of this is pretty cool. After going to that meeting in Fort Dodge Saturday, and I got to talk to several other county supervisors that were there, you know, going through the same things that we are, and they were very, very proud to see the things that are coming out of Woodbury County and to sit back and listen to some of the conversations of the people there. So much of it touched on what's written in here, even though they hadn't read our resolution yet, so it was pretty cool to take that in. And for some of you in the crowd, I will give a brief rundown in board concerns about things that I learned at that meeting Saturday in Fort Dodge. And so if you want to stick around after this next deal, I think it'll go pretty quick, and I'll touch on that. It was about a, what, six, seven-hour event, and Matthew has asked me to recap all seven hours of it, so we may be here a while, but but if you want to stick around, I'll touch on that. So it was a good event, and thank you for the Woodbury County residents to help put that on or speak there, so we are well-represented.
Thank you. Well, yes. Sure, sure, sure. We can come back to this item. We'll move on now to item nine, which contains our four forty-five P.M. set time with planning and zoning. Mr. Priestley's coming up. First item is A, this is to receive the final report. The zoning commission recommendation for the ordinance amendments to temporary heavy construction services uses involving aggregate crush and screen, asphalt mixing and concrete mixing temporary from prohibited to conditional in the general commercial and highway commercial zoning districts.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dan Priestley, zoning coordinator. This proposal, the need for it was identified earlier this summer or before the summer in regards to the Highway Twenty project. We've got a couple zoning districts in the ordinance, the general commercial, highway commercial, that doesn't facilitate a conditional use permit. But with it being out there in the corridor, it kind of makes sense to adjust that to facilitate not only the Highway Twenty project, but possible future projects. So the zoning commission does send you the recommendation to switch those districts to a conditional use opportunity for each of the said uses.
Very good. I'll move the, to receive the final report. Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. And item B is to conduct the public hearing on the proposed amendment. Public hearing is now open for anyone who would wish to address the board. This has gone through the vetting process of the zoning commission, but if there's another shot at it here.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing closed.
Second motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Item C is to approve the first reading of the ordinance as the final. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Nelson. Anything to add, Mr. Priestley?
Uh, no, nothing else, Dan.
Any questions in the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Item D is to waive the second and third readings. Mr. Priestley, any thoughts on that?
As far as kind of the timeline, the Highway Twenty project, of course, is commencing, and the timeline is kind of short. And with the way that noticing goes on, there will be a proposal this month for the conditional use. So we're requesting to waive the second and third reading to facilitate this. And so any future project is still up for public scrutiny as far as the conditional use with a public hearing at Board of Adjustment level for any.
Mr. Taylor.
And that's, you vetted that with our county attorney's office as far as proprietary nature of being able to, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Item E is to adopt the zoning ordinance amendment. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Nelson. Last chance. Well, it's been vetted. Any questions, final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Thank you, Mr. Priestley.
Thank you.
I'll return now to item eight, inviting any more public comments.
It seemed like there may be a question in terms of the process for the resolution. Is that something that was desired to be addressed as far as the process goes in terms of passing a resolution or?
Gail Palmquist, Lotton, Iowa. I just would like a little explanation about how a resolution is different than an ordinance and what the procedure is for a resolution. What can we actually get done by passing a resolution?
So a resolution will differ from an ordinance that we don't have to have readings. We're sort of doing that tonight in order to allow for information to follow in action by the entire board. In terms of the resolution binding any decisions, it doesn't. But it does signal to those that would come in with ideas that would erode private property rights or be from absentee landowners without consideration of landowners, how we're going to receive those in Woodbury County. We also think it sends the right message to Navigator, to Summit, to the I U B. Obviously, they know that we're enjoined now legally with other counties. But I think from a broader perspective, and I've been appreciative of Supervisor Nelson bringing to the table more of a rural perspective than I think that we've had for quite some time to make sure that people understand that when they come with the next new idea, that we're going to have a very high bar when it comes to private property rights, if they're going to degrade the land in a way that's going to take land out of production or it's going to impede the quality of life, that we're not necessarily going to be welcoming of that. I think we can state with this that we are open to new technologies, but we're not when it comes down to eroding, like I said, either the land or private property rights. So it's a signal. It's a kind of a broad-spectrum policy, but that's essentially what it is. It doesn't prohibit anyone, but I think it sends a signal, this is how the board is going to act, and these are the broad parameters by which we're going to govern, if that's helpful.
Okay, I'm just wondering how this resolution is going to help us with the things that are before us right now. Are we going to be able to stop the pipelines by doing a resolution?
No, we're not.
Okay, I think we need to make that clear to everyone.
Yeah. So I think it's, and I can make that very clear, this resolution will not stop the pipeline.
So what do we have to do yet?
I think what we're doing collectively as a board is we're saying that we are going to take legal action, and we have hired legal counsel, and we've enjoined with other counties to be able to do so, to do everything that we can through the courts and through the system in order to petition the I U B and go to the mat for our landowners. The resolution itself isn't going to stop the pipeline, but I think it sends the right message for the future, what we value, what our constituents are telling us, and the sort of ideas that we will entertain and welcome into our county and what we won't, so.
The I U B is really pushing this.
I absolutely understand, and I think it's, I think it's wrong
I do too.
that an unelected three-member board has that much power and that our legislature isn't able to stop it. But what we're doing, I think, is everything within our power, including legal actions that we've taken as a board, the resources that we've dedicated, the closed sessions that we have legally entered into to be able to receive that legal counsel. And so this is yet another thing that we're doing. Doesn't have the force of law, won't bind a future board, but it will set the parameters of what we value here in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
If I may, one of the things that, you know, hasn't been discussed in great detail, it is in the resolution, but kind of towards the end of it, is the safety aspect of these pipelines. If you're interested, I have a lot of science right here. This was part of the handout on this carbon dioxide issue in regards to the safety. Obviously, eminent domain is number one, right? It's the Fifth Amendment that we're trying to protect here of our constitution. But the safety aspect, I retired after twenty-eight years on Salix fire, and I can tell you, if I had to deal with a CO2 burst from one of these high-pressure pipelines as a first responder, I'd be running the other direction. So if you're interested, I can make copies and email these to the entire board. This is the science behind CO2 and what the hazardous of it could be.
I would move to receive. We can enter it in the public record that way.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three to zero to receiving of the record. Please provide it to Michelle.
And to piggyback off of what Jeremy was saying, you know, all five of us are willing to put our name on the line and say that, no, this is what the citizens of Woodbury County want. This is, this is what they view as the future. This is what proper or good use for our land is and our resources, and we're willing to put that on paper, which is what this resolution is, and sign our names to it to say we will defend our landowners and our citizens and their property rights, and we will make the most out of the natural resources that we have here to try to make the whole county better for everyone. And I don't know that some counties are quite willing to do that. And yes, it's not going to stop the pipeline, but at least they will know that when they come into Woodbury County that we take our citizens to heart and we will defend them and that we are serious about, that we know what is good for Woodbury County going forward. And that's really the purpose of this. And we hope that other counties will do the same, you know.
Just to clarify, the other point is, this gives direction for our zoning board and our Board of Adjustment. And they're on the front line along with you, and I think this really helps us to know that this is exactly what the people and our board are leaning, the way they're leaning and the way they want things to go.
For sure, for sure.
Any other public comments?
So I too would like to commend the board, but let me assure the public that a resolution or not, there's one elected official in Woodbury County who has the authority to stand and protect your constitutional rights, and that's the office of the sheriff. And I think we sent a message to, what, Gail, was it your farm? When there was question about whether or not they were going to be able to get on the farm or not, and they were trying to push their way onto the farm, and we refused and did not allow that to happen because they had not followed the proper procedures. So there's really only one elected official in Woodbury County who actually has the authority to stand in the way of them violating your constitutional rights. And I can tell you that as long as I'm in that office, they will not violate your constitutional rights. And I commend your resolution, but the resolution is a signal or however you've described it. But the authority that's entrusted with the sheriff's office is very clearly defined. And if they were to violate your rights, you should contact me immediately. And we'll do whatever we can do legally, including up to all the way of going to redress the government, which is guaranteed in the First Amendment of the Constitution, if you feel that you've been wronged by the government. So just understand that I think in totality, the elected officials here are willing to stand up and do what's right. If all the rules are followed and everything's done legally, that's one thing. But if rights are being violated, you certainly have the right to contact us and we'll make sure that we continue to protect your rights.
Just want to ask one question. Is there anybody who would like to speak against the resolution or for the pipelines that's here, or that would like to either signal support? I didn't think so. And what's remarkable about this issue is that I see Democrats and Republicans in the room, those who lean to the left and those who lean to the right. And I was explaining to a legislator that, you know, this is kind of a rare issue. I mean, how many times do you get ninety-six, ninety-nine, whatever percent the support is for private property rights, for knowing what's right for our land? And I think that that should be a signal from the governor's office on down through every legislator's phone that this is what people want, and people ought to have what they want. And so to me, that says something that nobody in this room is either speaking against the resolution or for the use of eminent domain or pipelines and so on. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. And I would just summarize the relationship between authority and our signal is obviously there's different levels of authority that are in conflict and that we believe certain authorities at the state level are not taking appropriate action or interpreting rights incorrectly, and thankfully, we have a sheriff who, I believe, thinks the right way on that. But that's why we have this signaling, is because we're urged to make decisions on behalf of other units of government, different levels, and we can't, but we can certainly influence. And that's what we're here to do at the end of the day, is move the ball in the right direction. So we'll take no official action on, excuse me?
If I could just add a little perspective, I appreciate the sheriff's perspective on that. And you all correct me if I'm wrong in my perspective on what you're doing with the resolution, but I see it as a shot across the bow of the powers that be that are trying to ramrod this pipeline through. And it's important, even though it's not binding, it is important because courage breeds courage. And you all having the courage to write this down and hopefully a unanimous vote on it sends a message to other county supervisors, to the state level, to these pipelines. It sends It sends a message that is very important and it, it will breed courage. It always does. And, and you do not know what may happen because of the stand you take. So again, I appreciate that and that's what I'm hearing, you say that's my perspective.
Thank you. All right. We will take no official action tonight, but this will come back.
Mr. Chair, I believe you'll need to postpone that action until next meeting.
So I'd move to table, action on the resolution to next Tuesday's meeting.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes three zero. Item ten is reports on committee meetings. Mr. Taylor.
You guys have it, do you guys have anything? I guess I'll talk about, so Saturday, the Midwest Coalition, I want to say it right, to protect private property rights, put on a, a big convention, I guess you could say, in Fort Dodge. I was urged by several of our landowners to go to that and so I did. There we had quite a few of our Woodbury County residents were there. Doyle Turner was a speaker and I think probably got one of the biggest rounds of applause of the day when, and he was talking primarily about how we can benefit from this, from these carbon pipelines or from sequestering carbon without going through the pain of pipelines or eminent domain. So that was really great. As, as I think Steve Corey said earlier in the meeting, there were legislators there from North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, there was a lot of county supervisors that were there. I was able to visit with some from Shelby County and Emma County who are in the same legal battle with us, with Jim Whipple. So that was great to connect with them. The, there was a gal and a guy from North Dakota and I cannot remember if they were both representatives or if one was a representative and, were they both representatives?
Yeah, they were, one was a senator.
One was.
And the other was a legislator.
Okay, so the, so the gal had spent her whole private practice life as a CPA and then became a legislator, I think, after she retired. And so she was talking about, I found this really curious, that these pipeline companies are LLCs, limited liability corporations. And the problem with that is, is that they're faceless and nameless. Nobody really knows who the investors are that are wrapped in with these companies. And, and where that becomes a problem is that these carbon credits that the government will pay them for the, for one of the first times ever, they actually can get these payments in cash. And it's up to one and a half billion dollars a year for twelve years. And so the question was raised, do we have foreign governments investing in these companies? Do we have foreign companies? Do we have people that hate America? Do we have, you know, countries that maybe are going to own this pipeline eventually that aren't, you know, Americans or any of our friends? And so I think that begs a really good question is, you know, who are the people behind these? I think they, I had written down here that I believe Summit has four hundred and sixty-four investors and they currently only know who five of them are. You know, so I think that that, again, who are some of these people? The senator from North Dakota, I thought what he talked about was, was really interesting because I had not heard any of this in the media. But up in North Dakota where they plan to sequester this carbon in the ground, they've had issues up there in the past with companies storing other things, liquid in the ground and it moves throughout the soil. And most of you guys are farmers, so you know that it can spread through the pores in the soil. And so in 2021, a group of landowners got together and said, you know, this is not right, that they can dump, you know, a liquid under their property and then it leaches underneath mine. Because in North Dakota, if you own land, you own it to the core of the earth. And so as these people were saying, well, how is this stuff leaching through the soil into, into my property? You know, essentially trespassing without any sort of compensation. And so they took it all the way to the North Dakota Supreme Court and they, the Supreme Court in North Dakota agreed unanimously that if companies were going to pump liquid in the ground and if it was going to move in the soil, that they had to buy easements from landowners for their subsoil. Otherwise, they had to try to contain, they had to contain that substance in the ground. So that comes to this carbon. So currently, a bunch of these landowners that went this first go-around several years ago do not want to do any easements with any of the pipeline companies. So currently, they don't actually have a place to dump it up there. And so most likely, it's going to go back to the North Dakota Supreme Court to see if they can eminent domain, this basically the subterranean areas of people's land to dispose or to have this stuff leach into that soil. And they don't think that the Supreme Court is going to allow that. So his whole comment was, I'm not sure how we're even talking about procedurally eminent domain, routes for pipelines, that kind of stuff, when they don't have a place to put it currently. And that was something I did not know. So I found that really, really interesting. One of the other things that was said there that I thought was interesting and what was the gal's name that was running the, was kind of emceeing the event? She was a state representative from, if you would.
Cindy.
So she, I think it was her that said that thirty-six percent of the land in the United States is either federally or state-owned. And she made a comment, why don't we put their green energy initiatives on that land? I think that got a pretty good reaction from the crowd because I, I would tend to agree. Why do they have to come out and take our, our good land when they've got a lot of it that they don't even allow people on that would work for some of these projects? But anyway, it was a very big crowd, very motivated crowd. I was glad to see Sheriff Sheehan come up here and talk in a little bit that he did because there was a farmer there, rancher there from South Dakota that told his story. Jared Bosley, if you look him up, he's been speaking all over on the tragedy that's happened on his farm and the, with, with Summit and what they've, what they've done to him and his rights and his family, young family. And so it was very brave of him to, to be there Saturday and tell a story. And he's been traveling other places doing the same thing. So I urge you to, to research him and there's all kinds of articles and interviews with him and it's a very sad thing and, and I hope that the same type of thing isn't replicated in other states and other places, so. But with that, that's really the gist of it. And if there's any folks in the crowd that want to say something different during citizen concerns, that's fine too, but I'm glad I went, I learned a lot and, you know, thank you for those that invited and us, you know, supervisors, I'm glad that one of us was able to go and we need to do stuff like that, so.
So does, does everybody here, have they heard the story about Jared Bosley? Do they, does everybody understand and know what happened? So what happened to Jared, he's a rancher farmer just south of Aberdeen, South Dakota. Unfortunately, they don't have a sheriff in that county who understands his constitutional duties. Jared was ten miles away from the home place planting and he's got security cameras because he's got a cow calf operation there. And, and there was a pickup that pulled into the yard. His wife was home alone and she looked out, no identification on the pickup, Louisiana plates. She called him and said, you know, who are these people? Well, what happened, backing up a little bit, was they got out of the truck. Somebody actually came to the house, she was somewhere else in the house, opened the door and yelled into the house, anybody home? She didn't know who it was. Then they have on camera, and you can, it's, I believe it's on YouTube, you can find it. These guys went to his shop, opened the door and went into his shop, came back out. It's all recorded. So she calls her husband, Jared, and very frightened and said, I don't know who these people are. And she said, you know, they had Louisiana plates. She said, I'll bet these are surveyors from Summit. She, he said, go out there, bring the phone with you. And she did and he asked her to hand him the phone and he said, you're trespassing on my land. You need to leave now. It was a six-second conversation. It's all recorded. They left the property and went straight into town and went to the sheriff's department and claimed that he had threatened them, threatened to kill them. An investigator was sent out, Jared wasn't home, went out to see Jared and they literally, Jared had to get his attorney to sort this out. In the meantime, they put a, something on him where he was not able to get within three hundred feet of the survey crew. The survey crew came back out with a giant piece of track equipment, a drilling rig. Jared could not get within three hundred feet of these people. They had their own private security people that were armed and the sheriff's deputies were there to provide security for the survey crew. This is what we're dealing with. They lie, they'll do anything they can to get what they want. They drove this giant piece of equipment through his yard, over young trees that he'd just planted, out into the middle of his bean field and punched a ninety-foot hole in the ground. He doesn't even know if they properly sealed the ground. All of the sludge and slurry that was, that came out of that hole went into a tank in the back of a truck. Then they take the slurry out and they dump it in the ditch down the road. They have policies there, you can't put tree branches in the ditches there. That's how they respect our land. That's how they respect us. Unfortunately, they didn't have Sheriff Sheehan in that county to protect them. That's the story. It's really sad. That was, as I'm sitting there, I had such, I was sharing with Supervisor Nelson, the emotions I had just listening to his story. This is a big, strapping, you know, young guy. And, you know, I was, my heart was breaking at the same time. I just, the blood pressure was going like this and it was really, it's a sad story, but I just want everybody in this, in this audience and supervisors to understand, we're dealing with monsters here, we truly are. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Item eleven, any citizen concerns for anything not already addressed on the agenda? If so, name an address and give time for three minutes. Any citizen concerns?
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight, two hundred street. We've had some discussions about the future of the economy of Woodbury County. I was doing some studying and I've done some comparisons with Sioux County in the past. Sioux County had a bill, two billion dollars in ag income. If you take that divided by all of their land, that's about over forty-one hundred dollars an acre. If, if you just raise corn, you would need a yield of like six hundred and eighty-nine bushel of the acre at six dollars a bushel to equal that. The reason I'm bringing this up is you can see young farmers out here and we need to add value to our crops. We need to add value to our CO2, whatever is here, we need to add value to it. And I think the fact that they're willing to come here and show you that they're willing to take the time means that you've got good people to work with. If we lose this younger generation, it's done. You know, cattle feeders and hog feeders and those type of people, they don't just appear, they're, they, it's in the blood. And so we need to do everything we can to support these people right here because that economic activity you get from adding value is what increases your multiplier and that's what leads to real prosperity for your county. And like I say, you know, Monona County, their county seats the poorest town in the state. We have a choice here. We can either become like Sioux County or we can dwindle away down like Monona County. And I think we've got people that can make the right things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
So I just have a gift, I guess. This is from the, the pool refund that we get from Advanced Correctional Health. This is our, our healthcare pool. I failed to look and see what last year's refund is. I don't think Dennis probably knows it off the top of his head, but, but I'm pleased to inform you that this year's refund is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. So would like to give that to the board.
We'll just endorse this on the back here. It's not to us personally, so I have to give it back to Dennis, I think, our finance guy. But I saw it, so that's something. Thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Going once, going twice. Item twelve, any board concerns? All right.